The meeting. So we do have one executive already on the agenda. Does anybody have a need to add another? Any other need to amend the agenda?
I have none.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm motioning to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Wow, we haven't had, we haven't had an unamended agenda in a long time.
I know it.
We're trying. Look at, so I even had a habit. I just circled amended this. Had a habit. Oh, and the erasers are booty on these pens.
I told you the erasers were horrible. I warned you.
I know, you did. All right, anything on the select board minutes of November 5th?
Under the 2027 budget, I think it's on the second page or the backside.
Oh, yep.
It says, "Flat budget on traffic fines. Ms. Reed, stay there. There were previously three daytime officers and currently there are two full-time officers and one officer." Is that correct, the way that's worded?
There were. It's a little hinky, but yes, there used to be three daytime officers because we had Sulya, Stefan, and Chief, and right now we just have Chief and Sulya, and one of them has to be dedicated to Bridge 108 project.
So we really have just two?
Yep.
Okay, that's, okay, I was just confused by what it said. I got it now.
All right.
That's it.
All right, town manager's report?
The Veterans Day's harmony on November 11th was well-attended. A huge thank you to Wiz for her assistance as well as Robert Schumbeck's for his willingness to speak, and Dean Kenyon also donated the wreath again this year like he has for the last several years, which is greatly appreciated.
Yeah.
We had our staff meeting on November 13th. I did get the municipal planning grant submitted for the five-year limp. We're awaiting the awarding of grants to see if Pittsburgh receives this grant. Maggie, Regional Planning Commission, said it looks like it might be good. There weren't that many applicants for Rutland County this year, surprisingly. And a reminder, the town offices are closed Thanksgiving Day and the day after Thanksgiving, and the town clerk's office is now open again on Fridays.
Oh, okay.
Well, it is.
Nice.
Dolores asked for it to be open again on Fridays.
Great.
All day?
Yep. Eight to three.
Awesome.
She finds it's easier because people still come in and it disrupts, you know, so she might as well take them if they can.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. What are our?
I think it's great.
What are the current hours? Do we, we don't have a late, do we still?
Nope. Monday through Thursday, eight to 4:30, and Fridays are eight to three.
Okay.
And we did do delinquent taxes, and the delinquencies were much less this year than the last year or two. I know definitely less than last year.
Great. Thank you. All right, any select board member remarks? No, we don't have anybody on Zoom, right?
Well, yes, but no.
Okay.
No, you don't have any of your folks on.
Okay, thank you.
I have one.
Okay, yeah.
I have had a couple of people mention to me about the entrance off Oxbow onto Route 7. It kind of protrudes out, and the guys turning in there with trailers can't make the corner. So the state has, as far as everyone's concerned, botched that. I looked at it the other day. I think they have a point, but I just wanted to bring it up because.
You're talking about the curb?
The curb.
Yeah, it looks pretty, I saw that the other day.
They're trying to do this snaky thing, and it's not going to work for traffic because if someone's coming out, you can't swing a truck and a trailer through there, even just a little toe behind. You can't do it. I think that's a mistake on management.
Yeah, have you heard, um, I know people that live near there have said that they seem like they've messed, like messed up a few times and had to alter. Has that, is that true, or is that, have you gotten any word on that?
The only thing I received was after the lawsuit was satisfied.
Yep.
They had to change in plans that slightly changed things, but I haven't had any other communication other than that.
All right, because, yeah, it does, because they do seem like they've had to dig up things a couple of times.
Is it worth it to schedule, whoever that project engineer is, that you have communication with? Maybe one of our meetings via Zoom in the, in the next month or so. It doesn't have to be in the middle of holidays, but I think there's.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's her.
There's some questions starting to come. I think if we put it out ahead a little bit, maybe we can let some of the citizens come in and ask the question.
Yeah, we should do it soon because they're wrapping up the project, so she's gonna, she's gonna.
They're done as of Friday. Beldens is done as of Friday for the season.
This season.
They are done, done, okay.
So, but I think we should kind of maybe plan that, or if she wants to stop in at our meeting, that'd be great, too.
Yeah. So what is left to do? So they are a little behind? They got a little behind, Ann?
I think they need to do like the spring cleanup seeding down.
Oh, okay, so for all intents and purposes, they're done.
And we got a huge, huge lift coming down the hill.
They're going to get the paving done this year?
I bounced over it today.
Yeah.
That's going to be a.
Yeah, if she.
Yeah, I don't know if they're going to get the paving done this.
I think they're going to have to do it in the spring.
Spring.
Well, maybe if she could join us.
Yeah, that would be cool if she's willing to, yeah, she's willing to be here via Zoom and answer some questions. That would be great.
Are you looking for like Carolyn Cota from V-Trans? Because I think she's the one.
Well, who's the, who's the woman that's on all the emails that we got regularly?
Stephanie and Carolyn are actually both on them, but Stephanie's like the face. She's the one that the community can talk to and everything.
Oh, I see.
Carolyn's more behind this.
She's been on that since day one.
Okay.
Whatever you think.
Yeah.
I'll try to get them both. I'll see who I can get.
That works.
Was the question again that you're going to ask them? What are you going to discuss with her?
We have some citizens that have asked, commented about the corners being too protruding out of Oxbow.
That curb probably put in.
We've got, looks like still paving to do because there's a bump. There's also water sitting in the exact same place where we had the problem before.
I did notice that, where when we first noticed it, they said they hadn't put in the drainage yet, but yet.
I think it would be a good idea. That's why, that's why I started hearing from people that maybe they come so the questions can be asked.
I was told I would be taken care of when they paid.
I came out of Oxbow the other day. It was scary. Honestly, it was scary.
It's an arrow, yeah.
Yeah, in that spot at the bottom of Oxbow.
You can ask anything you want if she comes.
The bridge on the Oxbow side that does carry that water is going to be scary this winter.
When we did the plans, we said that would be a problem.
The street lamps do look good, though, I gotta say. The street lamps.
Yeah, they do look good.
We'll see something.
They'll probably complain about it when they turn them on.
Yeah, they probably will.
Is the bridge heated now?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
I thought I saw lower a, a utility cabinet a week or so ago, maybe two weeks under the bridge.
Probably for the lights. Might have been for the lights.
Okay.
Which would make sense, I guess, yeah. I haven't even noticed, I haven't even seen them yet. I've been avoiding going through there, so I haven't, I gotta go check it out because we have, those are, are they the lamps that we picked out?
I think so. Tom says, yeah, I can't remember.
All right, cool.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, it has been a long time. All right.
They look good.
All right, uh, okay, any public comment?
About that? Anything?
Anything you want.
You call it a comment?
Yep.
You do?
Yep.
I have a comment.
All right.
For those of you that don't know, probably Dave you don't know, or Tom, I'm Al Robersch. I live down on Elm Street, just this side of the Cooley Bridge, okay? So I'll try to keep this short this way. In 2025, I personally assisted four tractor-trailer truck drivers to somehow get out of trouble because they went down Elm Street, found themselves at a covered bridge with no escape route. Okay? The last one I helped had an emotional hug for me because he thought I was saving his license. So to make this shorter, my question is, has the town of Pittsburgh have any thoughts about responsibility of the town to put some sort of changed signage or something up near the Pittsburgh Farm or whatever to really let these truck drivers know they shouldn't go down that road?
I mean, there is a sign there. I'm not sure, I guess.
It's not going to work.
I don't know. Yes, this is something that comes up periodically, and we've talked about different things on how to take care of that, and.
We even talked about putting some more fill in there so that might be able to get a truck to turn around. We discussed that, too.
Yeah.
Down by the bridge?
Yeah.
Which we opted not.
Which we nixed that.
We opted not, but it was discussed.
Yeah, it's not big enough.
Because I will admit.
Right now, if you fell in there, it would be big.
What, the turnaround or the sign?
The turnaround with the truck. I saw you help that day. That was something.
I helped you. I mean, the good news is, we got, I got them all turned around safely without damaging the road. Now, the bad news is, I actually allowed them to back onto the Cadwell Field, which is really not my land and not my okay, but it seemed to be the better way of getting them out of trouble as opposed to having them try to back all the way up, which I've done that in the past, too, and it took a long time with a lot of traffic backup and so on. I'm just trying to help out the truckers because their GPS sends them down the wrong road, and like I said, the last driver, he was so emotional that he could have lost his license over the whole deal. Of course, you know, a couple of years ago, we had one get hung up in front of the bridge, and it was ours and two huge wreckers and so on. I'm just trying to do something positive for the truckers.
I know. I just wish they also would, and I appreciate that. I just wish they would also read the signs we already have. It is very, very frustrating. I mean, you know.
I'm Terry White. I live across from Al, and I just recently had one back, maybe a couple of weeks ago, back into our lawn leaving huge trucks to turn around.
Yep.
We put in huge, big stones, but it still doesn't stop them. But I would recommend strongly that an initial first step could be much better signage, big signs at the beginning where they start down Elm Street. It's just small signs and they're partially hidden.
It's something we should look at, yeah.
And what about the speed bump that was going to go there? Because they're still speeding down that road. That might, between the big sign and the speed bump, wasn't there a speed bump you were going to put in?
No, we talked about, we talked.
We talked about it in front of the firehouse.
We talked about it in front of the fires. We talked about putting those three-quarter year, I'm not going to call them boards for lack of a better.
Oh, so it wasn't such a wide, you know?
So they couldn't just shoot right down that the tractor-trailers wouldn't, it was almost like a chicane. They wouldn't be able to go down. That's what we had talked about, and Chad and I have talked to Ethan Pepin, but I think it kind of fell through the cracks with everything.
Maybe we can look into that again.
Jill's got something.
Yeah, go ahead, Jill.
Just if y'all are familiar with the notch. They have problems over there with tractor-trailers all the time.
And they have big signs.
They have mondo signs that light up.
I know.
They put one of those chicanes through. First day it opened after putting the chicane in, tractor-trailer came right on through. Unfortunately, people are stuck on stupid. And I mean, I worked an accident scene one time in a construction zone and was nearly hit. There's orange barrels all over the place. There are signs telling people to move over. Auto lights, construction lights, "I'm in reflective gear," and here comes a car and nearly takes me out. And we asked, "What part of all this did you miss?"
And that's my concern with, I mean, we can, we, again, we've talked about it before and we can look at it, but putting a bigger sign isn't going to necessarily, there's.
But if they have to slow down with whatever it gives, you know, you're talking about, that might be helpful.
Maybe. I mean, that's a 25, that's a 25 mile an hour corner to begin with.
Don't they still get trucks going over?
A lot of it, I think, is people can't read the signs if they're driving the truck.
That's, that's true, too.
That's what they've been reporting. I don't know what you're seeing down there.
Which is maybe when you shouldn't, you know.
I don't know what else.
How about making the bridge pedestrian-only and dead end on each end?
Ah, no.
Either side, either side of coming in from either side and out for local residents.
No.
Appreciate the idea.
Bridge closed, bridge closed.
Why don't we look into something else with signage? We'll give it a try.
I know.
Yeah.
I'm more about stiffer fines for the truck drivers personally. I mean, I get it that they're, but you, I could understand, though, what you're concerned because they're in your yard.
Under what circumstance do you find them? Just for going down there and getting stuck?
If they went through, they tried to go through, going, trying to go through the covered bridge, there's a height and fine.
Also.
Yeah, yeah, there is a weight limit.
I don't know of anybody that tried to go through it, but one tried to do it, a turnaround, and he got hung up.
Yeah.
But I don't, no tractor-trailer is going to try to go through that bridge.
There's a weight sign on the end of the road, right?
We've had, we've had trucks trying to go through all, all.
That'd be exceeding the weight limit. They're already breaking the law going down the road with a sign, but if they don't read the sign. I think we should try something a little more, we'll give it a whirl.
Yeah.
We'll see what Chad can.
Yeah, because a lot of those truckers that come from home, they don't speak English. They don't, can't read English, you know, so it's, that's a tough one.
It is, I know.
I'm not here to complain as a resident. I'm only here to say, let's do something positive for the truckers.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no, you're welcome.
Is there such thing as a horn alarm that would sound if it couldn't see over the vehicle coming down the road, like a tractor-trailer?
I don't know.
Some sort of radar sees that? I don't know. I think of stupid things sometimes, but.
They have it in New York City at the Lincoln Tunnel.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Really?
I didn't follow GPS. I followed the directions that the shipper gave me, and I started to pull in, even though I was kind of looking at things like, "I don't know about this." And sure enough, before I even had a chance to stop, lights were going, sirens were going. I'm like, "Oh, crap." And here comes the tunnel police like ants to, it was crazy. But they do have that technology. If you're over height, you'll chirp a beam and lights will go off and whatever else wants to go off.
Lincoln Tunnel?
Yep.
Let's try the sign first.
Yeah, I know. That seems a little excessive for a little town of under 3,000 people, but.
This idea, Joy.
I'm just saying, the technology is out there. They do make such a thing.
All right, thank you.
I found out the unfortunate way.
Um, any more public comment? All right, so old business, enhanced energy plan.
I did not get any response from Regional. I did send Logan and Devin emails asking what would happen if we took pages four to seven out.
All right.
They didn't respond.
I didn't get it to it very quickly, so they've had their 48 hours because I got.
But I gave you everything, yep, at the last select board meeting of the statutes.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I read it.
I got all that from, from Devin.
Yeah, I don't, I read a lot of that. It was.
It was.
Yeah.
It was what?
I couldn't, I couldn't read into that. I think we went through this before. Did you read the whole list from, did you read that whole thing from Devin?
I read what the legislature put in place.
No, did you read the whole thing he sent? That whole, well, I'm just wondering if you, if you. This is the guidance. It's that thick for energy planning. Did you read it?
We went through it at, at all these meetings.
The guidance or the plan?
The plan and some of that.
Yeah, some of it. This is something. So.
Okay, I guess my comment is that there was a declaration of inclusion that this board passed on November 4th, 2020, and that's all talking about equity. So unless this board is going to get rid of that, it's the same thing. I mean, you weren't on the board at the time.
Correct.
But it's the same thing talking about the equity. And if we, and if the people that came here that did not want the big solar coming in, and then we were told that we had to do the energy plan, which the board asked us to do so that we'd have better teeth to, to fight it.
Yes.
And now, all of a sudden, Devin had told us this is what has to be in there.
I don't want to tell you. I mean, we, we voted on it, and that, that's how it came up. And I was actually at the meeting where you went over the first eight pages.
Right.
Yeah, I made it very clear at that time that that, I didn't think that was going to fly. I made that very clear.
Okay, that was your opinion.
Correct, but I was speaking, I didn't think that part would fly. This, this isn't a social program. It's an energy plan. These first eight pages.
It's a financial program. And if you've got the declaration of inclusion that you did in 2020, how's that different from what we're trying to do here?
Maybe needs to be reviewed.
What, from the legislature? I mean, they're the ones that set that up, that that had to be in there.
So, maybe I'm speaking out of turn because I know how you two.
Go ahead. We feel, we're fine with it. You're the one that isn't, so she wanted to talk about.
The other two that are missing have voted, so I will, but, um, we've already went over, we did vote no on it, according to the, the whole committee, and it was a split vote. We haven't gotten any information back from them or the.
I gave it to you from Regional. I gave that.
Can you let me finish, please?
Sure.
I've got pages of notes on all of these. We went over this, and we thought maybe the planning commission would review and see if some of this could be taken out. We don't have a problem with the rest.
You did take some stuff out?
Yes, we told them. We've, I had conversations with Devin, and.
We haven't had anything come back to us. There's been nothing that's come back to us since we voted on it.
I think she means there was stuff taken out before the copy that we've seen, correct? Is that what you mean, Donna?
Yes, yes. We've got, they've got the bare minimum of what they need there. If that can't be in there, then the energy plan is done. And how much did that cost the taxpayers for the grant, Ann?
The grant goes until December 31st, 2026. It's a $4,000 grant.
How many thousand?
Does that mean we pay it back if we don't adopt it, or we have to pay it regardless?
I don't know what the rules are on that one. That one was, Dave did it back in 2023, so this one was a long-term one. I don't know what the, I can't find out.
Yeah, I'd be, I mean, I am also frustrated that we did ask the planning commission to do it, and we voted, this board voted unanimously to send this to the planning commission and then just have them send it back and work for so long with Regional.
I mean, really, you're looking at the legislature. They've got our hands tied. I read that, too, and I'm like, what is, what are they talking about? But it's.
Same thing. There's some things in there that I think that are unnecessary.
The legislature passed, and our hands are tied.
There's almost like a little mini history lesson in there. I think some of that stuff is unnecessary, but us, feeling like it's unnecessary doesn't make it not legally necessary based on what's in state statute. And that, some of the stuff that we're not maybe thrilled about being in there is also not like any kind of legally, it's not legally binding. It's not actually a program. It's where we're prescribed to do anything. So. I guess we're at an impasse.
Right, and, but my big thing now is, I think something has to be done about that declaration of inclusion. You have to go one way or another and get rid of it because that's all tied into all of this. And like I said, that was, that was voted in November 4th, 2020.
Yep.
And I believe it's mentioned in the.
It is mentioned in there.
So that goes against what.
I know.
Equality, equity. That's where I sit. If everything says equality, equity means you're taking away from somebody else if somebody else can do. Equal means everyone has a good opportunity and the opportunity to have everything in here. I don't have a problem with that at all. But I don't think we should take away from others to bring another up to a certain ending point.
But where does it say that in there?
All through it. That's all it says through it.
The whole thing, like the first six pages.
Where does it say it's giving from someone, taking it?
Where's the equity for us? We lose farmland.
I know, the definition is.
We have to look at these things. It's all energy that goes elsewhere. We don't benefit from any of it, so how is it equitable for us? It's not.
Tom has two cows, has to give one away so he can be equitable to the neighbor because they don't have to cow.
I think that this document, as it pertains to Pittsburgh, is specifically just giving us more legal standing to decide where to site solar fields, which is what the citizens overwhelmingly asked us to do. And we're getting hung up on the, on the, the word, so I think we find that frustrating.
Seven pages of words.
I do, I think it's, I don't, I don't disagree that I think it's unnecessary, but I don't, if this one is, you know.
I'm sorry, I can't speak for Dave and Dan because they're not here, but I'm, I'm sorry. I just, I don't have a problem with that.
They knew that this was coming up tonight. You don't hunt at night, so where are they?
The vote was already taken. Nothing's coming back to us.
Oh, no, 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 no.
The vote here was taken on this, and we've had nothing come back with any changes.
I already gave that information to you.
You, you gave us the regional planning standards, but we didn't get anything back from the committee on, on changing it. Did, did the committee address it?
Yes, we did. It's in our notes. It's all in the minutes.
So the planning commission has not drafted another revision of this since you turned it down now?
Because that's the bare basics of what has to go in. Devin was very clear about that. Either it's this or you don't have the plan.
We definitely need a plan.
Yeah, we do definitely need it. I mean, the towns who have had it have been successful in turning away, you know.
There's a three person.
Acres and acres of solar.
Because three people that makes the decision. You get deference in your discussion, but they make the decision. So, um, I, I don't know what else to say. I mean.
Okay. It is just legally, we are leaving ourselves, by not adopting it, just want to be clear that we are leaving ourselves open to, we have, we have less legal standing.
Our last discussion, were we going to contact Devin and ask him about what can be, we have no response from him yet.
Well.
Honestly, that's, that's what we wanted after our last discussion on this, and we don't have an answer from him. So we're kind of beating on the same path before hearing from Devin. I mean, that was our request after the last meeting.
Well, you should have told me. I would have gotten the request done. I would have. I mean, I had already done it once with him. I had a conversation with him. I had all that information. I gave it the last board meeting. I am the alternate, or the representative for them.
So is it too late to change?
Change.
I didn't think it was a vote. I'm confused, honestly.
I mean, we had, we did vote, and it was three to two.
Three to two.
And it tanked to adopt this, but we, I asked to keep it going to see if we could have, I would like to have a revote, but we haven't had a full board, I don't think, since, and we haven't had any different information from Regional, so.
I will reach out again.
It's kind of like revoting the school budget when it hasn't been addressed. I mean, they keep revoting it till it passes, but we haven't had a response yet from them. That's all we asked for.
All right, so we'll, we'll see if, maybe Donna, if you get, if you get a chance to talk to him, just ask him that, you know? That would be great.
Okay, so what's, everything that I told you, what's different? What else do you want me to get out of him, out of Devin?
I asked him to, I asked him and Logan both because Logan's been working with our planning commission. I asked them to revisit the first seven pages and see what absolutely had to be in there for the first seven pages. I said, "We did work with Jeremy before. I can't ask Jeremy now because he went to, on a different, to a different adventure." And I said, "I would just like different eyes to look at it, and please let us know if there's anything that can be cut from those first seven pages because those are a concern."
And when Devin, when Devin got back to me, he said, "Nothing. That's the bare minimum. It has to be in there." That was it.
So, that's what we asked at the last meeting.
But that comes right from the legislature in that 2022 comprehensive plan that they did. I mean, our hands are tied, so, and so all the people that came in to the planning commission to talk about their concerns, and we never had any visitors, as you know.
How many do we have come to the hearings for this? You know?
For the.
For the hearings we had for this.
Energy plan? I don't think anybody came.
Had zero.
But.
I didn't know about it, otherwise I would have been here.
Right, the people that came up with the solar, that's what started this whole thing, is that the people that came here that were upset about solar, not only did they come to our meetings, they went to Regional also.
And our meetings were packed then, and people did ask us to do this.
Yes, yeah.
They did not come for the hearings, but also they might not have heard about them, but yeah, the rooms were full for a very long time.
Several meetings.
With the solar stuff.
Right.
People overwhelmingly do not want to see any more large solar fields in town. This was our way to give ourselves some legal standing.
Otherwise, we have no legal standing.
Now, it is just up to the state.
Well, don't you have any say in your town?
No.
Not, not really.
We really don't, anyway.
We're, we're dealing rural state, so.
This just gives a little bit of say in.
Right, this is the kind of stuff that.
Puck is going to make the decision, no matter if you have deference or not. There's three people on the board. They're going to decide what is right and wrong, which, to me, is an even close to representation.
Except if it gets appealed and it goes to court, then this does give us standing. It's, it's in the paper.
Until they pull out the equity, and then they come at you from that angle, and they make us out to be racist because we're not being equitable to the poor people, I've seen this game before.
So better to do nothing and then just have the state have all the power? That's.
Well, look at the project that was going on in Fort Edward. The state had all the power there. That's 1,700 acres. Yeah.
Terrible.
Anyways, this was our way to get legal standing, but it was not, it didn't pass, so we're going to, I guess, move on from now. I do.
Okay, but I'd like it noted in the minutes that I want, I want some information about the declaration of inclusion. If this board is against that also, that needs to be taken off your.
I'd like a response from those two. That's really what we asked for after the initial vote. That's really what we asked for after the initial vote, so.
Thank you, Donna, though, for the, I do appreciate the further information. It's just, we're currently at an impasse. Thank you.
All right, we have some updates to the budget. So in your packets, after the town manager's report and the OCAD report, you have the information that was asked for in regards to this
Power lines.
Power lines and utilities and solar and all of that. And then I also gave you the taxation on solar plants because that does affect our town.
So if I read that correctly, the solar really isn't affected by this. It's just the power lines?
No, the solar is
Oh, is this the subsidy now that we're doing?
Yep.
So we're subsidizing current use, and now we're subsidizing
So the solar plants
Just a point, we've been subsidizing solar since it started. There's no education tax on solar at all.
There's more now that they did the assessments.
I know, but since the start, we haven't paid. So it's been not a great deal for us from the start.
If you look at the valuation of solar plants, Lisa's email breaks it out, and her bottom line is that these industrial installations pay roughly a quarter to a third, depending on the ratio of education versus municipal tax bill, of what any other taxpayer in town would pay based on assessed value. Because they do not
Right.
Because they do not
They don't pay the full taxes.
They don't pay the full taxes. And they also, on the municipal's tax side, they pay about 70% of the value.
Which is another reason why to not want more solar in town.
Exactly.
So the biggest thing I see here is Green Mountain Power and Vermont Transco.
They're the biggest ones.
And Green Mountain Power went from 13 and a half million fair market value to eight and a half.
Eight and a half, yeah.
And Vermont Transco went from 28 million, this is 18. Those are the two drops. The other ones pretty much look the same. I don't think there's any changes in the other ones.
That was the legislature that pulled us through.
Yes, that's what it is right now. And that's what Lisa had received from the state.
So I just wanted to follow up and let you know that that was in there.
I know, because this was the first year this went into effect, right?
So what was the total that came off the grand list from this? That was kind of where we were. That's what I was asking her. She gave us a lot of information.
So right here, she has this
Oh, here it is.
Mark, yeah, if you'll get this one, it shows you
It's this one, right?
Yes.
GL?
This one. As input in GL
Two million?
A decrease of one and a half million.
So what came off the grand list was one and a half million. And that's just on really Green Mountain Power and the transit lines.
It's actually more than that if you look, because this is before the CLA adjustment. This is as input on the GL. So 2025 before CLA was 13,597,163. After our CLA, it was 8,570,300 for Green Mountain Power. And then Velco was 28,526,802 to 17,980.
It's more on those two. That's what we're saying.
Yep.
So what came off the grand list was last year was a million and a half? Is that correct? Twenty-four, twenty-five, now we're looking at
Yeah, the twenty-four, twenty-five, the decrease was a million and a half. And then our regular grand list on this side went up just under two. So it's only got like $500,000 difference.
From, that's last year.
Yep, because of the way everything looked out.
Futures, right? What we're looking at here, so it's Eight, nine, 10? 15 million? Is that correct between the two of them?
Probably, yeah. I didn't sit down and figure it all out.
And that's a loss of tax money to our kitty?
Yeah, we're subsidizing
We'll end up, the rest of us will pick it up.
Instead of our grand list being
Thank you, state of mind.
How is that?
Exactly. I mean, Lisa brought this up last year. There was
Yeah, she did.
I remember that. Yeah, she fought hard to make
And she's still fighting, so
Yeah.
Can we do anything else?
I don't think
I mean, this is crazy.
I don't think so, but Lisa said if you ever wanted her to come to a meeting, she's more than willing to come and discuss.
She went and testified.
She's still testifying.
It's just like the Act 250 with the bridge. That was a joke. It's the first time I went to one. It didn't matter. It didn't matter. They did what they wanted. And they looked at us like we didn't, we're not engineers, so too bad.
Act 250 doesn't listen.
Yeah, so
Well, I did ask her for this. That's how this started because I want to see really what this, and it's greater than I thought it was.
So then
What's the bottom line?
It, so the differences are swallowing up any gains in our grand list from, you know, people improving their properties, building houses, whatever. Pretty much our gains are being sucked out by what we're losing on our electrical, our solar, our transit lines.
Basically, it's a million and a half that came off.
Jeff has
And how many taxpayers are there in Pittsburgh?
I don't know.
Taxpayers or parcels?
Whatever is going to eat that money up.
Parcels pay.
In our taxes.
Well, parcels pay, but then we also have the personal property. So I'm not sure what it is totally combined, but I think we have 1,800 and something parcels, I believe.
So are these bigger numbers off the personal? Is that what you're saying?
No.
I think Jeff has something to add.
I was just going to say, unless the rules have changed, solar plants, solar facilities, it's worse, but it's subtle. Solar facility valuations and tax rates are locked in with their CPG. They don't go up for the whole 20 years or 25 years of their lease. So while other property values go up, but in assessed value, they get locked in in an artificially low one over the life of their project.
Yeah, when I was a lister, there was a formula, and that's what you had to go by.
Here, I gave it to him.
So that has to be taken into account at some point in terms of the municipal level, I'd say.
Yeah.
Right. Anything as a town, we can go back to the legislature with it? Or is this just the edict from above again?
Well. No, I mean, I'm, I don't know what we could do about it. We'd have to get somebody to sponsor a bill to repeal it.
Is there anyone in the state legislature we know?
Well, we go back soon, so I'll let you, I'll, I'll bring it up.
I think you should be brought up. That's kind of undue burden on the taxpayers.
I would say.
It is.
And for whose gain? Did the state gain anything out of it?
I didn't see the power bills go down.
Well, no, but it somehow feeds into their energy goals. The energy goal is based on, you know, some other legislation.
Public.
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
Which is becoming kind of a sponge on goals too, so.
Just like this education thing that they didn't do that they're supposed to do.
I know. All right.
Can I keep going with tax?
Yeah, I know, we're like, wow, we're
And I think we're going to solve my P L O.
No, not tonight.
So in your packets, you had one version of these. And tonight at your station, you had another one of these.
Oh.
Actually, I had two in my packet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But I think they're the same.
So this is, you had asked me per thousand, how much the budget would change if we kept the budget we had last select board meeting? If we kept that, at the bottom, you'll see the change per thousand general fund is .0389. So four cents per thousand. And highway is .0349. So again, three and a half cents. I figured it out. If you have a $200,000 house, you're looking at just under $16 change in your tax bill.
For the municipal part?
For the municipal part, not including education. I kept education the same. I didn't touch education. I didn't touch
No, that's out of our hands.
That's out of my hands.
This was the question we asked.
So that's the one that's in your packet. The one that you had sitting in front of you tonight. I gave you a very long list of everything I chopped, hacked, added, decreased.
Yeah, I haven't gone through that yet because I just saw
Nope, that's fine.
Yeah.
General fund change would be just under three cents. It's .0297. And highway fund would be just under two cents. It'd be .0195 with those changes. So you're looking at
Does that change on this?
So you're looking at
It's on this one.
It's on the one that was
So what does that math then end up being for $200,000?
About $10 increase. So it's a $16 versus a $10 increase.
Okay.
On a $200,000.
Yeah.
It's a 10 versus a 16?
Yep.
An interesting statistic to maybe use, I don't know where 200,000 is. It sounds like a nice number, but the average house in Vermont is 375.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Well, double that then.
The census and the regional planning commission has what the median and average house for Pittsburgh is.
Yep, okay.
So that would be where I think you might want to use that.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, no, that's a good idea.
Maybe it's less than 200,000, which would fit with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I just
This gave us a starting point to kind of conceptualize.
Can we review this, though, before we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Definitely. I just wanted to give you two options.
What you have shown here is what you've cut out since our last
What I've increased to decreased. There's a couple of executive session conversations that have to happen with this change.
Okay.
And then something to consider. On both of these, I did not budget for any revenue for annual family passes or daily gate fees for fiscal year '27. We changed it and allowed them to go in for free this summer. And we saw a drastic increase in use of the rec by having it for free. So we felt strongly that more people took advantage of the rec. I didn't know how the board felt about continuing that. So, but I did not put it in there, not knowing what our lifeguard situation is. We usually start advertising for them in January. So I did want to let you guys know, this does not include any, and that before was about $5,000 or $6,000 of revenue that we used to get. But this last year, because of our lifeguard situation, we opted not to do it.
What was, what was the revenue roughly?
So
What did you just say?
I think it was between $5,000 and $6,000. Hold on, I can tell you in just a second. So in fiscal year '25, it was $6,011.06.
Okay.
That's what you made on the pool being open?
Yep. That was, that was
After, after costs for the
Not after costs. This was just revenue coming in for annual family permits and daily gate fees. In 2025, we brought in $860.06 because of the way things get rounded in my rec for annual family permits and daily gate fees was $5,151. And then in fiscal year '26, we opted to allow people to use it for free. So we didn't have that revenue
Yep.
For this fiscal year. So I wanted to bring both, let people know that that was one of the big changes.
And this is the updated list?
It's circled red and says updated in the corner. Yes. I tried to make sure that they were labeled.
I want to make sure that everything goes in the same pile so I can review it all.
No.
All right.
All right, yeah, we can, so everybody can just read that at their leisure, and we'll revisit it next meeting. All right, Fire Hill property updates. I had that, and now it's gone.
I don't, maybe, let me just, right here. It was at our, it was the one that was at our, oh, this was the one that was given to you at your station tonight.
It was here tonight, yeah.
Got it. Okay. All right, so. Are we talking about all these, though, even though we just have Fire Hill in there? So it looks like the Fire Hill ones are, we have two improved and one significantly worse, according to this list.
None of them are in compliance, if that's a point to make.
Okay.
But the overall situation, at least, is identified here.
Yep, okay.
What is that overall situation?
One is very much improved. Two, well, one is been improved. So out of the three on Fire Hill, we got one significantly worse, one very much improved, almost in compliance. And, and one has to get rid of the junk RVs.
Okay.
Is the junk RV on the property that's been improved?
This isn't, it's not Fire Hill.
No, there's, that's
No, the three Fire Hills. Okay, so
Oh, I was looking at Chateau Way.
Ashley.
Yeah. So this was, this was basically all the hot button situations in the township as I know it. And of those, if you want to focus on Fire Hill, you have the three clustered together. There's been considerable effort on two of the three. And, and
Which is, which is the second one?
The third one is, is significantly worse. The only good point is that there aren't any junk cars in the town road right away as of last week, so.
That's good.
So if they're not in compliance, have there been any fines sent out? This is not a week old, or a month old, or six months old, or a year old. This has been going on for
I just want to make sure you're not talking directly to Jeff.
It's not Jeff's call here.
I'm talking out. I'm just making sure he hears me.
Okay.
Okay? And have there been any fines issued? Has anybody gone and knocked on the door to try and issue a fine? Or send the police out to issue a fine?
I believe at all these properties that those things have occurred.
Fines have been levied. As of the last meeting that I came to,
I don't know.
There were not.
I could answer that.
Let's ask Jeff.
Jeff is, I don't know, I know
Let me answer that. So there's been, there's been an enforcement action. The enforcement action is now up to the town to bring it to environmental court.
Yep.
The environmental court under the state laws that we have to follow are the one who sets the fines. There is a junk ordinance, but we're enforcing this as opposed to judicial court. We're enforcing this, or choosing to enforce this, I think, in environmental court. Correct? The board gets, that's where I'm, you know, that's where I've gotten to the point where it's now a board matter. And you have to make a decision on how you want to go forward legally.
Do we have a choice of where to enforce it? There's a choice that, so
You do have a choice, yeah.
Where's environmental court or
Okay, so the current zoning ordinance, the current junk ordinance states that you can enforce and there's two judicial courts at the superior court level. One is the judicial, is the ticket writing court, the judicial court, which is basically fines for civil violations. And the biggest one is vehicle violations.
Yes.
I went to one seminar and the person who has the court at that time in Bennington, in the Brattleboro area, that Southern District Court for the Judicial Superior Court, did 96,000 permits violations a year. 96,000. Their average hearing was seven minutes. When they get something from a municipality, they haven't seen the file. They haven't got anything, I mean, they don't preview any of this stuff. It's just on the pile in their docket for the day. And, and when they get this, they hate it because it blows their average agenda, you know, for the day, right out the window. So, so I found out pretty quickly that this is a good way to enforce things on a one-time, maybe a minor penalty to straighten persons out. They have the option like you do with a speeding ticket to either plead no contest or, or, um, they can, um, pay the fine voluntarily or they can go to court. So, and, and most of these lower level fines, the people opt no contest or they pay the fine.
Yep.
So, so, um, in the case of these three on Fire Hill, they have a long track record before I've been here. And, and that's been a while. And so it was my recommendation that they don't bother with judicial court, but go to the environmental court of, in the superior site. And the junk ordinance that Haverstock wrote included judicial court or Rutland Superior Court. Well, there really isn't a Rutland Superior Court. There is a courthouse in Rutland that does Superior Court work. And in this case, it would be the Environmental Division. Um, that would be the Superior Court that handles this. Most of these things are done remotely, as you know.
Yep.
So that's where we are. And, and, you know, the new junk ordinance, I think, was worth waiting for because it clarifies a lot of the ambiguities in the old one. And it has more teeth in it towards enforcement, which is the reason why, my understanding, that we were waiting on giving attorney marching orders.
Okay.
That's, that's where I.
So you've completed actions on all of these?
All of these, all, those three on Fire Hill have got outstanding notices of violation.
What about the other ones? They all have outstanding.
Well, the answer is no. Um, well, that's not quite right.
Number one is not?
The, the Chateau Way.
Yeah.
Okay. So she's in violation. We haven't issued the violation, but her decision from the board in her permit application was denied, automatically creates the violation in that case. And again, it has to go, you have, you got to enforce it. That's the point we're making. The, the one at the bottom on Hollister Quarry.
We're about that.
Yeah, all right. So, so then, then the one at the top of the list, that one, uh, is a recurring issue.
That's what I hear, the most complaints.
Well, it's because it stands right out in your face.
Yeah, it's right there.
Now, let me just say, I've had long conversations with this property owner. He actually got a permit to build a foot high fence for privacy screening, which he's never done, right? So if he tucked all, and he's, he's heard from me, you tuck all that stuff that is in violation in the open behind, you know, screen it from property owners' boundaries.
Yeah.
Um, then you go back into compliance, at least under the old rules or the existing rules. It's going to be old rules, I think. And he hasn't done it, so he's in violation.
No, it's terrible, it looks worse and worse.
So has action been taken on number one?
No. It's going to be reinstated. He has an outstanding zoning violation, which I haven't rescinded because he never built the permit, uh, built the fence to rescind the permit. That was, that was the deal. You, you know, if you act within the, again, 14 days, he came in, we had conversations, he got a permit to build the fence, he got a lot of the junk off the property. So he made good faith effort. And let me just say.
But he did?
He did. Well, it, it was, at that point in that period of time.
I was going to say, because it looks like there's more and more stuff there every time.
Well, no, we're talking about, um, over a year.
Oh.
Okay? And let me just say, it's my experience, that you're going to get this situation after every Labor Day because it's after demolition derby starts, starts this season, you know? And everybody who has demo cars, and, and that includes Fire Hill, they, they all tell you, wow, we're saving all those Jeeps because we want to take them to the demo derby or we want to go, you know, mud swamping with them, that kind of thing.
I don't know, that.
That's, that's the reason.
The one, number one, one on this list, there's a lot more going on than those, those cars.
Yeah.
A lot more. And it's spread out over.
Well, we could go into that conversation, but I don't think it's on your agenda tonight. And that's a long conversation I'd love to have.
So don't you think action should be taken?
No, I think it should be.
Yes, we should be treating, everybody should be.
My suggestion is to pass the new junk ordinance and then we can issue the permits under those rules.
Well, that's going to be 60 days from the time.
Right, the time that.
I mean, I can issue the violations.
Yeah, please do. I mean, I think it should be consistent, everybody should be.
Oh, no, I'm not opposed, I'm not, I'm not saying cherry pick by any means.
Yeah. I just, I mean, some, yeah.
I mean, we're just piling a violation on, on, on top of outstanding violations.
Great.
Which, I mean, it's, it's advantageous to the municipality to do that.
And if it ever goes to court, it's good to have all this documentation that, that there had been, uh, these had been filed consistently.
Right. So could I just clarify for the record? So number one does not have action taken against it yet?
It has an outstanding violation.
But yeah, action's not been taken?
But no action's been taken in terms of enforcement.
Uh, two, three, and four, we know you've taken action.
Yep, they have outstanding violations.
What about five?
Um.
Chateau Way. Action been taken or is it?
Number five, let's see, one, two, three, four, five. Uh, Chateau Way, I, I have not taken outstanding viola, I have not issued a violation because my instructions, I think, were to wait and see how to handle that particular property owner. Right? She had the issue with the squatting tenant and that's, you know, one of the things that caused her to be in violation.
Oh, the tenants are now gone.
So, so there's nothing left there to be in violation for?
Oh, no, that's not what I said.
The people, the people are gone, their stuff, vehicles are not.
If you look at what I've got there, it's clear that there's a number of violating vehicles.
So does action need to be taken there?
Yes.
A, a new action needs to be taken because it stemmed from a ZBA hearing.
So I think we should.
Half of that was remedied, half of it was not.
Take action there then. Uh, what about the next one?
That one is a, a, a repeat, um, situation and he did clean up. The last time I issued him a violation, he did clean up. Um, and now it's, he's just, you know.
Does action?
It's habitual.
Does action need to be taken?
Yes.
But I think we should do that too.
That's one that I think, I shouldn't speak for everyone. I was unaware of that one, actually.
Well, it, it's not in your, as much in your face as the other ones.
Yeah, okay.
So number, uh.
But we have complaints. And then we've had a couple of complaints that, you know, we've written to the property owners that received the complaints. And you get into that gray area to some extent, uh, but there are nothing, I just, you know, like the one that had cars out front that were unregistered, that were, that were working vehicles, they weren't totally junk vehicles. They were right up front and, and there was a few of them. And so they've cleaned up. And they're not quite in full compliance, but.
So you will be taking action against number one, number five, and number six?
I think you need to, if, if, if I, if I were to paraphrase, or the legal counselor, he likes fresh violations to enforce. So, so I think they all need to be issued.
But if there's a violation that hasn't been healed, shouldn't.
Well, we could ask them, you could ask him on that question. The outstanding ones, if you give him marching orders, um, he's going to say, well, when was the last time we issued the violation? And he may say, would like to have that all refreshed with the court.
So that means that one, five, and six, you need to refile violation.
Let's do it.
I just wanted to clarify what we're going to do.
Yep.
Yeah.
I get the other ones. Okay, so one, five, and six, reissue violation.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So are you aware that there are about 12 unregistered vehicles at my neighbor's property, Artie Junior? He has two vehicles behind everything. He has nine, I believe.
Are we talking, are we talking inside the perimeter of his property?
Um, yeah.
Can you see them from the road?
Absolutely.
Well, I would say I don't know. The answer to your question is I'm not aware. Well, what we do, what I'm taking, these, these, um, observations from are from the town, town highway.
Town highway there is Fire Hill Road. You cannot miss it. You cannot miss the vehicles. If you go slow by his property, you'll see eight or nine in the front, two of which you knew about.
We're talking about Artie, Artie Wayne the third?
Number four?
Yeah. Yes.
And did you?
Okay, no, he's gotten worse.
So is that the one that's next up is environmental court? Did I understand that correctly or no?
No, he's, he's got a, he's got a, he's got a violation from the December round on this, yeah.
So is that reissued too?
It was last summer, we issued the violation. So, no, December, we actually had, we, he doesn't live in Pittsburgh anymore, so we actually had him served. And since then, he's added cars to the collection. And there's also now a new turn of events in that his neighbors have junk cars where they never had junk cars before.
All right, well.
His neighbors?
Yeah.
Where he lives now or on Fire Hill?
Across the street, Fire Hill. No, Fire Hill. I don't have any jurisdiction.
There are no jur, there are no junk, junk cars, uh, anywhere near Artie Junior's house.
No, we're not talking about, we're talking about Wayne the third here.
Which is Artie Junior?
Which is Artie Junior's.
There's no, there's no other unregistered vehicles on anybody's property that you can see from the road.
There's two cars that you can see from the road without front license plates down the hill, um, going, going north.
Down the hill going north.
And then on, on, um.
On Fire Hill.
And Stalker's property has one.
I know. So, all right, so Jeff, if you could please just follow through with all of those, that would be awesome. And we'll keep moving on those.
Including number four, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, um, select board letter re, um, our buildings. And first right of refusal, which when I was going through all the court papers, I was like, I can't, I just can't believe that we gave away some of that stuff, but anyway.
If I might say something and then I'm going to leave?
Briefly, yes, because.
So. I really haven't enjoyed these meetings, but it's not what they're for, they're not for enjoyment. It's astounding to me and not understandable why it has taken so long to have someone like Artie Junior served when I have been complaining about this for, what, four years now at least? And nothing was done. So in my mind, there are many people that didn't do their job and that's unfortunate because maybe it could have been better by now. Um, and I bid you farewell, I'm not coming back.
All right.
Actions have been taken all along, if you've been paying attention.
Um, not at the House.
Okay, okay, okay. We're going to move on, thank you.
Could I inject a question? Um, are you going to address the junk ordinance this evening?
Yes, it's on the agenda. Um.
Where is that?
So they start with quick claim deeds.
I know.
I gotta find it.
I can't believe we quit, it's really, I don't even want to look at it, it's frustrating. Um, and between all the legalese, let's give us the Cliff Note version of, um, I'm a little confused about the blue house and if it's still, if it does actually fall under the, um.
So that question.
It didn't seem, I saw there was questions back and forth.
Questions back and forth between Jeff and Lisa about this.
Okay.
Um, which I included you in the emails that were sent to me.
I have a bone of contention about this property if it's.
I've had a, I know, and I wish Mills was here because he and I have had an issue with this for years. Wondering how this has been acceptable that.
Yeah. They're not paying tax on that property, so we're living there.
We included the cards, um, and all of the quick claim deeds that I found in the land records.
Aha, okay, my stuff is separated by some other stuff.
Three parcels of land are commonly known as the Blue House property southerly of US Route 7 and westerly of the roadway leading up to the Catholic cemetery. The parking lot for the Lothar elementary school on the easterly side of Pleasant Street and the Old Town Hall property southerly of US Route 7 respectively is the second page of the first quick claim deed. This conveyance is made subject to and with the benefit of any easements and rights of way and any utility easements, spring rights, easements for ingress and egress and right incident to each of the same as may appear more particularly of record. To having to hold all right and title in and said quick claimed premises with all the privileges and appurtenances thereof to the grantee Otter Valley Uni, Union Unified School District and its successors and assigns to their own use and behoof forever. And the grantor Town of Pittsburgh School District, AKA Town School District of Pittsburgh and Pittsburgh Lothar School District for itself and its successors and assigns thus covenant with the grantee Otter Valley Union Unified School District and its successors and assigns that from and after the unsealing of these presents, it will have claim and claim no rights, title, or interest in or to the said quick claimed premises. So I don't believe it was conveyed that.
There's no right?
What are we talking about, the use of the property?
Specifically, what we were looking at was initially was to see if, um, since they're, they're talking about closing Caverly again, as they do pretty much every year, um, whether we would get that back.
Mark, do you want my copies?
What are you talking about?
I guess, I can't find it.
I'm not talking about Caverly.
No, I know you're not. So in, in asking Ann to look up some stuff about this, then the blue house kind of came back in just because obviously this was all part of the properties that we gave up after Act 46, which is so stupid. Anyway, um.
Is there something in Acts 46 that we need to be looking at?
So are you telling me we can't get it back?
It doesn't sound, by the way, the quick claim deeds were.
Were we the only town that were stupid enough not to make sure that was in the paperwork?
Apparently we're not the only town that was.
Scammed.
What the heck? That's ridiculous. It should have been $1 back to the town.
I thought that was.
I thought that was part of Act 46 or whatever the state act was when they did that. That's what we need to be looking at.
Did Gary look at, did, was he involved in any of this?
No, I, I pulled up everything with Doris's help for the deeds to see what was actually recorded.
Because I can't read, I mean, I've.
We need to look at the law when the, I think it was in the law.
Which year was it? Act 46 of?
Seventeen?
Twenty's.
Twenty sixteen?
Oh, well, twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen.
Do you remember that?
What the heck year was that?
Just Google it.
Well, Act 46 is every single year, so.
Somehow they got it. Also, I didn't realize that was 45 acres also that they have of our land.
Yes.
It's currently used for.
I don't understand who let this go happen. I was not on the board at the time, just FYI.
It used to use the blue building for special.
That's ridiculous.
Special ed.
So I will look for Act 46.
I mean, were, were the towns even given? Did the board have, you were on the board at the time, where, was the board actually even given a choice or was this?
I remember.
Ridiculous.
I remember when they came here and sat here, when we switched lands, the school for the haunted house property, the five acres, whatever it was, that the Acts 46, if, at that time, if any property wasn't used for school, children purposes, the property would revert back to the town, even a school building would come back to the town for $1. That's my recollection.
I remember that being the conversation when it was going into place.
That's why we need to pull the law, how was that law?
Written.
Written.
And was that law being overridden by this quick claim?
By this quick claim deed. That's, that's what we, we need a lawyer on that.
Yeah.
Quick, quick claim deeds is the number one, uh, crime out there right now.
Yes.
It's worse than identity theft, it's worse than credit card theft.
I guess I don't really know what that means. Can we have a quick definition of quick claim deed?
Somebody can go in and basically.
Was got it, I guess.
With this quick claim deed, state claim to your property. And because everything is online, you don't show up in person and it gets approved and now all of a sudden, you're no longer the owner of your home.
Which is crazy because even, I mean, it's the, it's not even Pittsburgh people that signed. How can they have the right to do that? It was the superintendent signed the paperwork.
As a representative.
What the heck?
Cool.
And then Fleming, who's always on everything, the financial person there.
I'd say they pulled a fast one on you.
I think that's true, and we might, we really need to get a lawyer involved.
Tom's the only one who was on the board at that time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I recall that we were to get the properties back. I don't recall how the deed's up, cuz we didn't sign it.
I remember that conversation from Proctor when we were talking about it at like PTO and stuff.
Well, let's, let's please investigate this further and get our attorney involved and see what he has to say, and then, but I am also, Jeff, tied into all this because it's in all the same paperwork, is the Blue House, which looks like, again, I'm not a lawyer, but like reading this, it seems to me that is, it's not fitting the criteria of them able to, yeah.
So, so the Blue House, which was a single-family residential property with a permitted daycare facility, is what the school district bought. Next thing we know, they have let the property be part of compensation for one of their school managers' families. And the change of use, right? But they still, and I brought this up to Haverstock, and I'm pretty sure I mentioned it in conversation to Atherton, that I said, are these guys still tax exempt? You know, basically, they're using it as a single-family residential house.
Right.
And the last answer I got is, no, now they're having special classes.
No, they're not.
Well, the point is, is the, when, when the property was transferred to the school, and it became a single-family residential property, and they abandoned the daycare facility permit, and you can check with the state to see if they maintained the daycare facility permit.
No, it was special ed.
It was special ed, it wasn't daycare, it was special ed.
It was a special ed program in there.
The kids at Lothrup who would be, I guess, what we now say dysregulated, that's when they're, yeah.
Well, the permit I saw was daycare.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, it was daycare.
Oh, you know why? Cuz the after-school program was in there, that, which is considered daycare, that's why.
I thought it was a permit daycare.
But during the day, it was special ed for...
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
So my, my problem isn't that, then, my problem is less that they used it as a single-family residential property, which breaks the chain of the permits.
Yep.
And if a permit, in Pittsburgh, if the permit is, if the use is discontinued for, I think it's two years, then the permit's dead. And they, I don't know what their track record is, quite honestly, I haven't looked into it, because they didn't get the traction from the town managers to do so. But, but the real issue I brought up is, is it still qualified for tax exemption, so...
It shouldn't be, it should be, and should, it should be on the tax rolls, because it should've gone back to the town of Pittsburgh.
Could I recommend that Dolores take a look back at this filing date and make sure that all paperwork is in order for that? And, no, that there's not an addendum that shows that?
So...
I back?
If she can.
I, I pulled it all, and we pulled everything that had to do with Lothrup Caverly.
You pulled it back, you've already gone through that and double-checked it?
Is this a situation where you might have some misplaced paperwork?
No, I'm just wondering if we should recheck that to see if there might be.
It's gotta be, there's gotta be backup copies with an attorney somewhere, no? Is that not how this works?
I will dig.
You're scaring me with your lack of talking.
I will, I will do some severe digging.
Between that and checking the rules of that law?
We need it, yeah.
I think so, this has bothered us for years, but we've never followed through, and I think I would like to now.
Could I also ask that we pull the minutes from the meeting when that was approved? And see what was actually stated in the minutes from the...
That'd be awesome, if they were, were they on peg TV then?
Don't know.
Would you have them in the vault?
Couldn't be in the vault.
I would say we should pull the minutes and see what was on there.
Alright. Yeah, we're gonna go full-on detective on this.
Yeah, trying to remember who came, it was Lieutenant of the Schools was here.
It was Gene Collins.
Gene Collins was here, Brenner Flemings and Bonnie Born. Sat right there, three of them.
All in one.
All in a row.
Yeah, I don't feel, it's making me nervous.
Yeah, Joe was on the board.
This whole thing felt like a, felt like a hostile takeover from the day one anyways, you know? So I...
Joe, Alan.
We sold the builder goods.
I never bought it and not vote for that.
No.
Alright, well, let's continue, I could get mad about them more than I already am.
Let's find out more.
Yeah, let's go.
Can I keep these in?
Yes.
Thanks.
I'll print new ones. I'll, I'll keep digging.
Thank you, yeah, let's please do that. Alright, so our ordinances on regulating domestic animals and disposal of solid waste have some comments from our attorney.
Yep, so the one, can we do animal first, cuz that's gonna be the easiest one? I did talk to Rich, who is our animal control officer tonight about these changes, cuz I hadn't caught up to him before tonight. He and I would like to recommend that we, in the domestic animal definition, put domestic pet, and then, you know, to say the domestic animal includes domestic pets, to clarify Gary's first concern. Because then it would take care of issue number two. Section 7, the fines and waiver fees are equal. That's the way Rich wanted them, because he gives a lesson, a verbal warning, and then the fine is his third time, so he's like, it, they should be equal, they shouldn't be, the waiver fee shouldn't be less, it should be the same.
What's his, I don't, I don't understand what his reason, I don't get it, say that again.
So if he gets a call about an animal, the first time, he gives them a lesson and gives them a copy of the animal control ordinance.
Yeah.
The second time, he gives them a verbal warning, and then the third time, he writes the ticket, so he's like, at that point, they deserve full fine, not a waiver.
A chance to waive it, okay.
Right.
Alright, I guess I get that then.
And then, Sections 9 and 10, for written complaints about vicious and potentially vicious dogs, he said to slightly different entities, it's not clear if any other type or avenue of complaint is available, cuz we have written complaint with a select board of the municipality, or a complaint with the enforcement officer or select board.
Yep.
So I don't know how you want to change that, or if you want to change it. Or if you just wanna roll with it the way it is, and... Well... Those were Gary's suggestions. Or wherever it says domestic pet, just change it to domestic animal and include domestic dogs, domestic cats, and ferrets under a domestic animal definition.
Yeah, definitions are key to this.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So expanding that language to encompass every, all, all of those animals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and then we just have to continue that change of language into that section.
Yep.
Or into that second piece there.
Yeah, the impound.
I don't, yeah. And then, I don't, does anyone have any, is everyone okay with keeping the fines and waivers the same then, that piece okay?
I'm fine with that.
Mark?
Whatever things is proper.
Okay, yep. And then I guess just like cleaning up the language then, in 9 and 10?
Yep, I can clean up the language.
So it makes it so that it does, like, it's clear about who takes the complaints?
Yep, I can do that.
Okay. Alright. Do we have to revote on it with updated language then, yeah?
I would think so.
Because it's an altered document.
Yeah, so would anyone like to make that motion?
Well, we, I've gotta retype it, you've gotta check it next meeting and then approve it.
It's the next meeting.
Okey-dokey, then let's move on to...
Junk ordinance. So junk ordinance, you have two different...
Shorter than the full title there.
Two different letters from Gary, the first one is November 11th, with the one that I sent him, that you had approved at the meeting pending his...
Approval.
Approval, and he had some comments.
Yep.
And I don't understand why enforcement officer means any police officer appointed by the select board, I mean, we could just say means any police officer in the Pittsburgh Police Department. Clean that part up.
Yeah.
Cuz technically they are appointed select board.
Well, do you wanna limit that to the police, and that to also the state police? I would say any authorized law enforcement officer, cuz at 2:00 in the, 2:00 AM in the morning, maybe Pittsburgh Police will be there, but maybe the state police...
Why is the state police gonna deal with a junk ordinance?
Okay. I was, I was still on the pets thing.
We are onto junk ordinance. So he had some conversations there about adding subsequent identical, and making sure it says subsequent identical. And then he wants me to change should to shall, because then it'll be enforceable.
Yeah, that's definitely proper legal language.
And then Jeff sent Gary a draft, and I gave you guys each a draft with green lettering, and then Gary's comments were sent today on the green lettering.
Okay. Did we also just talk about the 90-day allowance language?
Uh, no, we have not.
Oh. Cuz I don't even know what that really means, so it applies to all vehicles or just on-premise utility vehicles? I don't really know what that means.
It means 1945, uh, uh, World War II, Korean War vintage, military vehicles, maybe.
Okay.
That people use for plows or something?
Doodle bugs, um, yeah. We're gonna restore them someday, type stories.
Alright. I see.
And then he just wants me to change the language for subsequent identical violations on that first November 11th letter.
So the red or the changes in the green were suggested by who? Or the green?
The green were by Jeff, yes.
And the red were, we already had?
But we already approved.
Yeah, just in disclosure, I just did that on a Sunday night on my own time, to just take a look at it, and Gary shut down from legal reasons, a couple of the things that I thought the language was intended to identify, but, anyway. He gave him a good reason to look it over again.
So I can make Gary's suggested changes to all of it, and then bring it back for the next meeting.
Bring it back next meeting.
And then let's, let's vote on it after that.
I know, I'd like to read over this more clearly.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, Terry, sorry, we should, I really should've just done this, done new business first, it made you suffer through this whole meeting.
Getting close to my part of the agenda.
I know, so now, Pittsburgh Village Farm EV charging station grant.
I think that one should be easy. We, we're now down to, with Green Mountain Power ready to submit their grant application, I should say revised grant application, it was previously separately with the town, I guess over here at the town offices, for one dual station, two chargers, now we're looking at four, because we're required by permit, Pittsburgh Village Farm by our permit is required to put in one dual station, so now we're going with, with two dual stations, total four, level two chargers.
Which permit?
The original permit, Carrie?
It's actually, it's the permit for our project, and it's the state energy code.
So it's a state permit?
That's a state, that's a state permit.
Parking spaces you have, you have to provide so much percentage as part of the permit.
Really?
That Green Mountain Power has come back and said the grant won't cover what's required by permit, so we're, we're paying, basically now, I've gone out and gotten two more bids, with the three electricians' bids, the low bid now is with Stubbs Electric, and it's all boiling down to, it will be no cost to the town, as you had previously anticipated. Pittsburgh Village Farm would end up paying approximately $20,000 for the excess costs that the grant won't cover, and we'll have two dual station, level two chargers.
And these are, these are pay-for-use chargers?
These are pay-for-use.
So payback.
And I think what Pittsburgh Village Farm would like the town to agree, is I think I've already presented to Ann, is town will have the service, it's a separate service for all four of these, will pay the monthly bills, agree Mountain Power, town will have the agreement with ChargePoint, who is the chargers, and can, can set the rate with ChargePoint to whatever you want. And we wanna make sure the town agrees, you're gonna set the rate to be net zero on the cost, that basically, it's the minimal charge that people will have to pay when they plug in, and there'll be no cost to the town going forward, that you'll set the rate with ChargePoint so it, it covers the GME, the power bills.
Yeah, administering this stuff. Yeah, there's a cost.
Yeah, there's a cost.
What about maintenance and, and, you know, damage?
So, they just pointed clarif, clarified, so we're gonna pay for the service that comes, the town pays for the service after you put it in, that's what I heard?
We'll continue to pay the electric bills, yes.
Pay the use charge, the electric charges.
Pay Green Mountain Power for the use charges, and, and also you can set the rates with ChargePoint, so that it's, you'll get, you'll, you'll get that money back from ChargePoint from the revenue from charging.
I guess I'm just confused, why do we have to?
We should know every part of that, in my opinion.
Is that something the farm can do? Why does the town have to be involved with the power?
Yeah, because that started, be, back in the, this started as a vote from the board to, and, to explore some of that, he actually went down to the, to St. Alphonsus first to see if they wanted to, so, and, but the Village Farm is where, this was a town in...
So the original grant.
...involved effort, cuz it would be, people would stay in town, I mean, there is some benefit to people coming and charging their cars and staying in town, and spending, you know, walking around and spending money.
Had Pittsburgh Village Farm never come along, and David Atherton never come to us and said, we'd like to, you could consider locating this on our, in their property, in any event, if it was just a dual station by the town, you would be dealing with it, you would be dealing with the bills.
But the penny that you'll get from it will come out to net zero, cuz all you do is, the people have to pay it to use it, and that would...
Yeah, I get, I get that, my only problem is, there is an administration cost for bills and handling all that, plus the use of money back and forth, so does net zero include all that, is that what we're saying, or are we just...
We can, I, I would have to double-check with Green Mountain Power and the company.
Cuz I don't have a problem, as long as the town isn't spending more money on it, I wanna make sure, net zero means zero, right?
As far as I'm aware, yes, between the Green Mountain Power and the...
Cuz we can set the ChargePoint.
We can set the ChargePoint, so we can make sure that we're at least covering our costs, if not going a little bit above to help cover administrative.
I don't have any problem with the power coming through us, as long as we have the ability to cover our costs.
That's all, that's, that's what I've been told over and over again, I'm not an expert.
Okay, I'm not either, so...
Green Mountain Power, the lady administers these grants, and we do these all over the state all the time, they say, yes, you can, the town can set up the rates, whatever they want, with ChargePoint.
I, I have met with her on it.
I think, just we wanna double-check and make sure that we can include all our costs, so it doesn't cost the taxpayer any money.
Yeah.
True net zero.
And there would be a contract with this? Ann, do you think? Or do you know, Terry, would there be a contract with the...
So, right now, the way it stands, cuz Dave started this, and then he, the day that he was leaving, he told me at 2:00, there's a Zoom, and sent me the link, cuz there was a snowstorm, so I did the initial, my initial foray into this was, I don't know what I'm getting into, but I'm here at this call.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The, uh, town of Pittsburgh has to do the grant with Green Mountain Power for the charge stations.
The origin, we had a double.
Yeah, it's a double, and they're, they're, they're...
Cuz they have to have their permit.
They're covering the other one.
Oh, they're covering the other one, we're just covering the two.
So, so, there're two, there's, there's two dual chargers, so four charging stations total. Pittsburgh town is in charge of this one, Pittsburgh Village Farm is in charge of this one.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I thought we were in charge of all four.
You will be.
So for, for the power, we would be in charge of all of them, the way it's...
But not paying for the physical, like installation.
I'm just putting the dots together.
For the investors, we've gotten bids for all four, and we're gonna, Pittsburgh Village Farm is gonna pay everything that's not covered by the grant.
But our grant was covering the whole cost, if I remember right.
Your grant was initially gonna cover the cost of just one dual station.
Yeah, of two, yeah, that's all we were looking at.
So they're picking up the cost of the other.
But four, you had to, you have to put in four for your permit.
That's right.
Okay, so I, I think as long as it's truly a net zero, we can set our, our rates so we're not losing.
Right.
And then I don't have a problem with that.
I will work with, I will work with Green Mountain Power and ChargePoint to ensure that that happens.
If, if there's, I mean, Brandon has done this before, they have the same setup, they have four dual, they have two dual chargers that they own, the town owns, in a parking lot, and they've had them for probably almost 10 years now, so they could probably give Ann some kind of a track record on what it costs to run these things.
Yeah.
It doesn't, you just like paying for another power service.
Well, they need maintenance.
Gets used, you know?
People run into them, they get banged up, and they need maintenance, I mean, that kinda thing, so...
You should confirm, Ann, but I'm told that you can set the rate at whatever you want, ChargePoint, a lot of people do it to make a profit, but we're just... A lot of people do it to make a profit, but we're just asking, you know, this is a, for the use of the people and the visitors, that we would hope, now wouldn't want to put a high rate and make a profit on.
Yeah, no, just to cover the costs.
No, but I, I think, I think Jeff brings up a worthy thing. Could you ask Brandon what kind of maintenance they've had to do, and if they're any damaged?
I'm already writing it down.
Because I think we would want to figure that in ahead, so that if something happened, at least we're covered.
They got a track record.
Yeah, that's sure, yeah.
All right, awesome. All right, cool.
Cool, thank you. Didn't get that at all.
And then were you going to just give us a general update on what's going on?
That's just another grant you've been helping us all with, and we thank you for all of these, that you've been participating, and the project is streaming ahead. In fact, I just got an updated bar chart scheduled from Nail and Brain Builders a couple days ago, that said we think we can finish this two months early.
Really?
Projecting to be occupied by the end of June.
Congratulations.
Wow, cool.
That's a great update. Good for you.
Awesome.
And if you folks, any of you want a tour, please reach out.
Yes.
You could use, you could use West Rutland's Marble Village as an example. They usually let the municipality go through as a group and give the nickel tour before it's done, and then they schedule in advance for a public tour, you know, and for, maybe a good way to find tenants, that kind of a thing. And it's a big social event, so they just had it last week in West Rutland, they were on the news Tuesday, I guess. So, so, and I, I gave the CO on that building, so I've been through it, yeah. It was 11 and a half million dollar budget that ended up being 13 million dollars, so...
That's the West Rutland.
That's not an unreasonable average.
No, I know. I know, back to the village farm, that's not going to be 13 million dollars, but, or whatever, but, yeah. I know, it'd be great.
We're going to be pushing forward all of our soft costs by the time we're done.
Yeah.
But we have, Rutland County Parent Childcare is going to be our anchor tenant with childcare on the, on the main level, coming off of, off of Elm Street, for 30, 30 infants, preschoolers, and toddlers, about a 30 each, that'll be in there.
Okay.
That's great.
Two apartments on the top level, and a community center that initially won't be finished until we can be sure that we can get the gap funding we still need.
Okay, so that's phase two?
That'll be, that'll be another phase to finish it.
Where would that be, physically in the building?
On the lowest level, if, that, again, we are all framed out now, we'll be actually roofing the addition tomorrow.
Okay.
So you're welcome to come look, but that'll be access from the south side, and so on, great access from all the parking area.
Great.
And it's an assembly room for about 42 people, I think it'd be permitted.
So seniors can get in.
That would be awesome.
I assume there's a rental, you're going to make that available for rental for events? For general public?
Yes, sure.
Landowner, right?
Yeah. And we have a little cafe of, of, in about 500, 500 square feet or so, in the front corner on Elm Street.
Okay.
I'm going to open a vending machine business.
Are there any...
I say cafe, but it's, it's, it's Tammy Blanchard, 802 electrician, if that you know, is going to be leasing that.
Are there going to be any restrictions on the rental units, being that there's a childcare facility underneath it? Is anything different in the permits? Because usually you don't see rental apartments put in a childcare facility, is that...
Well, I think part of the process with the Department of Fire Safety was, we had to have fire separation and fully sprinkled, it'll become fully sprinkled, to cover the safety factor of it.
There's no other things with the childcare?
Grants with the grants, it has to be affordable.
That ground checks?
Well, that's, I'm just wondering, because you don't often see a set of apartments with, with children. So I didn't know if there was any special in the, in the state permits for the childcare that, to follow through for the apartments.
Nope, I think that their own, their own requirements are going to be the security, you know, their separate K-PAD access.
Sure. Just wondering, I've never seen the dual, so...
But that would be best practice, you know?
I think you might want to.
Yeah.
Is the porch getting hooked, hooked on?
Oh, yeah. New porch is, would be very similar to the old porch.
All right. Cool. Good. Well, it's been great watching it come together.
It's for sure after eight years.
I know.
Maybe ahead of schedule, that's great.
I know, so congratulations on all that, and thank you for the updates. And yeah, let's, I would love to do an, do a tour, it might, and it might be easier if we all could coordinate, so you don't have to give us like a bunch of individual tours, you know?
Weekends, yeah.
So, yeah, a weekend, you think, would be better?
Maybe sometime early in December, when we get through the Thanksgiving holiday.
Yeah, all right, that sounds good, yeah.
Great.
Awesome.
Full plan, so we'll give you any indication.
All right, that sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we got our yearly snowman, snowmobile list of roads for approval.
Make a motion.
All favor say aye. Aye.
Whatever, yeah. Whichever.
Any questions on the orders?
Anything for me?
Oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, does anybody have any other questions for Jeff before he leaves?
You don't need to pay me to hang out.
No, no. I guess that's it, yeah.
Did you just drop us a note that those actions have been followed on, that we want to...
Well, we're going to do them the same way we did them last time, we're going to have the police private serve them, so...
Will you just make sure, at least, at least notify Ann, so she can, no, no, she can notify us.
Yeah, okay.
Somehow we get notified.
Yeah. Thanks, Jeff, have a good night.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Yeah, you too. Shoot, I forget that's coming right up, Thanksgiving.
So, on updated...
So we had, we had to add a few more payables, and I apologize that it's an updated list. In our rush with taxes and everything, we forgot what do, what date we had put on the checks, so when she went to do a check run today, she used the same day accidentally.
Oh.
So we did have a conversation about making sure if we did do checks, to have it on a second day going forward, but it was an honest mistake.
Two questions.
Yes.
Both are on 0527.
I don't know what's going on.
That would be Chardonnay.
Yep.
So the water tank hatch repair.
That was the one that was...
That's the bid, right?
Yep.
And the sewer line repair on arch.
So...
What was that? I guess, I got the other one, because I knew we approved it.
Yep. So, when Tom Ransom took down his house, put up the other one, some sewer issues were uncovered when they were digging to re-hook it up.
And they fixed it.
And it was on the town side, so since Chuckie was there, he fixed it.
He did it.
Yep.
All right, that answers that question. The other one was just the comment, Wilk paving, I see 87,000 for Oxbow.
Yes.
I thought that was a very good job. I looked at it afterwards, I thought it looked, and I've asked a couple neighbors here, how do they like their new one, so, but I think it looks good, just wanted to make a comment on it.
And that was done so late, because we originally were going to chip seal it, but that company wasn't able to do it, so we had Wilks just come in.
You want to go with the rumble strips, oh, that's all I have.
I did think the chip seal held up.
It did.
I didn't, like, yeah.
No, we, that was our original plan, it just didn't happen.
Yeah.
Now it's even better.
Yeah.
Um, just as a matter of curiosity, how come all of our, like, GMP stuff gets, like, broken out like that?
Because in the past, they have broken out Green Mountain Power to every single department, instead of having a general fund electricity, boom, and highway fund electricity, boom, water sewer, no, it's broken out by department. This is something that we are going to be evaluating over the next...
I know, like, one's only $3.85, you're going to pay, I mean, that's just like, it probably costs more to, it probably costs more to pay it like that, too, right?
Like, I think she pays them all in one check.
Okay.
Yeah, I think she does.
But it's broken out by department.
That's a good question, Alicia. That's more for our purpose, to see who's doing all the electricity, that's weird back.
Yeah.
Except that it doesn't really tell us anyways, like, they're not delineated.
I forgot to scratch it off.
But, I mean...
I'm, I'm losing my mind.
There's $0.85.
Um...
Did it tell you on the bill?
One last question, Alicia?
Yeah.
The healthcare information in here was not on the...
It was part of, it was part of the fiscal year 2027 budget conversation, because that's when we discussed it last time.
Okay, that's what that goes with. All right, let me put it in there.
Sorry.
So it'll be next meeting?
Yeah.
Got to put this together.
I'm shivering for some reason.
You better not be getting sick.
I better not either.
You better not be.
There's a lot of crud going around.
I feel okay, but I'm just feeling cold.
That goes.
There's no happy meeting in this room.
In case you haven't figured this out yet.
No, no.
We're trying. We haven't found it yet.
I think it's a comfort.
So, um, well, thinking about the upcoming session, and about how, uh, trying to get a bill to repeal that, you know?
I think that's a great idea.
That corporate welfare for solar.
I think that, for GMP.
At GMP.
They got a big rate raise, and we get another...
Hey, we get screwed.
No, this isn't, isn't, you know, what we should, you should put a bill in for, is for competitive power service, like New York does, you can pick from 10 different suppliers.
I know.
They get paid to carry it. Green Mountain gets paid for the maintenance, but you don't necessarily have to buy from them.
That's why stuff is so expensive here, there is no competition.
There's no, yeah.
Same thing with, that's why our healthcare is some of the most expensive, because Vermont